Well, let's see if somebody's on, if somebody could go on Face, uh, not Facebook, YouTube. Just to see, we have, the sound in here is not great, so I'm just testing the microphone. When you do speak, you'll need to speak right into the mic.
It's really bouncy.
No, I think it's fine. You just will have to, as we say in the music business, eat the mic. All right, Barbara, I don't know if you could hear, I know there's a delay, it was good. All right, so you just have to talk nicely and clearly into the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. So we're going to call together, call to order this special laws and rules committee meeting. It's 7:35. Members of the council from the laws and rules committee are here. Alderman Muhammad, Scott Childress, myself, Rita Worthington, serving as chair, Bob Dennison, and Sarah Patsy. We also have Carl Naimas.
I know I am.
I've been gone too long. Carl Frankel, and did I call, and Steve Shabbett is a member of our council. We also have joining us at the table tonight, oh, I said Michelle, I did, I did. I'll say it again, Michelle Hirsch, superintendent Paul Palladino, we have our president of the school board, Ms. Marie Anderson. And, and I think that's good for roll call. So it is 7:36, we're gonna go ahead and get started. The only item on the agenda tonight is the agreement between the city, the school district and the city of Kingston. And we will maybe open it up for our speakers tonight, assuming you're sitting at the table because you want to talk to us tonight. Mm-hmm. Yes, and so I will cho, let you guys choose between who will speak first.
Thank you for inviting us to meet with you regarding the Deets renovation. I, I want to begin my comments by saying that as president of the Board of Education, I have the authority to speak on behalf of the board. The superintendent speaks on behalf of the district, and a lot of work has taken place between the city of Kingston and the school district, so it's appropriate that the superintendent to be here, particularly to answer questions. The Board of Education has been asking three basic questions. What are the delays in the stadium project? What are the costs and are they rising and will they continue to rise? And how do we better communicate with the city in order to make this project a reality? The, the need to address it at this point in time was because of the intermunicipality agreement that had a clause that stated that if we were to end that agreement, we needed to give a year's written notice, which would be the end of this month. It is not the desire of the board to terminate, it is the desire of the board to get it right. And so on our August 23 meeting, we took an action in which we attempted, requested that we have, instead of a year, we have nine months, with the hope that we would have time to work with the city and get some of the answers to the questions that are being raised. And that really is the position of the board.
Thank you. Before we move to superintendent, did we have any questions for Ms. Anderson? No? Okay.
I think I just will say, I won't say it much more, won't repeat what Ms. Anderson said, I think really, the big question for, that we look at operationally from this point, I know the board, and I'm not speaking for the board, but I think is, how can we ensure more, Ms. Anderson said communication, but at least more input from the Board of Education on rising costs? So currently, the intermunicipal agreement has no, has no language in it that gives the district any say. So if the, if the cost goes up again next week by $5 million, according to the intermunicipal agreement, the district has no say. We can't say, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna pay that. Even if we can, even if we did terminate the intermunicipal agreement, we still would be paying for the Deets Stadium renovations, which is part of the thing I think a lot of people in the public don't understand. So what the board really, in our communications, is looking for is where, where can we find that place where we can meet and talk about when, when costs escalate? Now, I will say that we are part of the design team, we are part of the meetings, we are invited to all those things, but when it comes to the escalation in costs, we don't have say. And I'll also say that the district is responsible for some of those escalating costs, because some, some of the requests that we've made for the stadium. But looking from here forward, how can we work together with the city, with the city administration, to say, okay, this is what, what we're looking at, and give the board an opportunity to weigh in on that?
Okay, so I'm gonna defer to our president after saying, it's my understanding that we don't have the authority to allow you to terminate this agreement, right? But we're here tonight because we all want to come up with a solution that's going to be beneficial to both sides. Right? So with that, let me defer to our president, if you wanted to say something else about this, but we have a resolution in front of us.
Right, so, yeah, last week, when the school board passed a resolution to ask for the, the change in the, the agreement, to turn it from 12 months to nine months, thinking that through, and thinking about what the council's authority is, I didn't think that that was the best plan forward, because we have more say in the funding. And that is what their concern is, is if this project comes back more expensive, they want to sit at the table. And I felt like the resolution that you have in front of you now solves that problem a lot more than asking for the three-month extension, which still wouldn't guarantee anything. But this is us saying, if this project becomes more expensive, the city has to come to the common council. There's no way around that, they will come to us. This resolution is saying that we would invite the school board, and it's in section two of this resolution, and that's the part that I want to talk about, the specific language, because this isn't, this may not be exactly what you want, but that's where I want you to point your attention to, because that's what I added into this, to solve the problem about what to do moving forward. And it also talks about how the Recreation Commission, because in part of the agreement was that a school board member would be part of that, so a part of this resolution is also to encourage that to happen, because I, and Marie could correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think anybody in the school board is going to those Recreation Commission meetings, so that would be another way, not as concrete, as coming to the council when the funding, if the funding increases and the city comes to us. But those two solutions that go directly towards the problems that at least I'm hearing that the school board has raised.
So just to speak to the wording of the resolution, which I appreciate seeing ahead of time, the Recreation Committee is not the place where these, where these decisions happen. The, the Parks and Rec and the Recreation Committee is not where this happened, it really has been happening in the, the Project Advisory Committee. That's where the design teams puts everything together, that's where Jack does his work, not at the Recreation Committee. You know, over the last few years, we have, and that is accurate, we have not had someone at the Recreation Committee, but over the last few years, the Deets Stadium project was mentioned only a few times in the Recreation Committee, so I don't think that's the appropriate place to have a, a board representative.
I wasn't suggesting that that was the only place, because I do feel that the most important is with the common council, because we are the ones that hold the purse of the city, so I, I do think that I just wanted to point that out as another additional.
And I, and I do think there are, there are, you know, again, as Ms. Anderson said, we're not here to, to stop the project, we're here to, you know, put some crazy things on the, on the table. You know, I just left Crosby Elementary School where I saw our marching band do their, our marching band do their, their final performance before the season starts, and what we want to see is next year at this time for them to be doing that at Deets Stadium. So, you know, we are not, you know, we're not here to, to do that, we're here to make sure that not only maybe some new language be put in, but also the language that is in the, in the current IMA is followed through on. And again, that's, that's dual responsibility, that's the district's responsibility as well as the city's responsibility. There is, there is your statements around monthly meetings, membership in the Recreation Committee, those kind of things that I think we need to communicate better, we need to collaborate better, we need to be able to, you know, solve problems before they happen, and put mechanisms in place for that to, to occur.
So can I ask, Ms. Anderson, do you have the, a copy of?
I don't have a copy.
Did you, were you able to look at it?
But I did read it.
Do you have a copy of it?
I don't.
Okay, here. If we could all share. If we look at section two, this is the one that I think will be the language that we need to discuss, and so I'm hoping the two of you could weigh in on this with your opinion, and then maybe Rita, if you want, turn it to the council for their suggestions and opinions. Section two, after all the whereas.
With regard to, or let's, I mean, you all are looking at the language, right? Before I put this to a vote.
Yes.
I just wanted to hear your thoughts.
I think it's moving us in the right direction.
Okay.
I mean, this is the time to talk about if there are any concerns. I know I had conversations with a school board member earlier, and this wasn't exactly the language, so I want to make sure that any concerns are brought up now, because once this resolution passes, this is what we would be sticking to. So if there are any concerns, we, from council or from the school board or school district, now is definitely the time to consider.
Okay, let me go with Alderman Hirsch, and then we'll come to Brittany Scott Childress.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for all coming, being here. So I know Mrs. Anderson was asking, like, she had three questions, delays, costs, and better communication. So I just want to go to the costs for a moment, because I am a member of the finance committee. And when the project manager came to us back in July about the, the new bond amount, the $7 million additional, we were told that the total bond amount that the district would be responsible for as of that night was $19,700, and then that, that would be 50%. So.
Billion?
I mean, sorry, yeah, billion, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Sorry, million, yeah. Yeah, so I, I just want to, like, make sure that everybody knows what numbers we're even speaking about, because in watching the school board meeting, you know, it's getting thrown out that it's $26 million project, and I'm not sure that the school board even really knows, so I just thought it, it would be important to put on the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mean half of 19 million?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that, that's in the ballpark, yes, of what everyone believed, right.
Been communicated to the board, and, and we know that part, as part of that money, the 26 million is part of the Andretta Pool project, which the board is aware is not part of this district's responsibilities. And again, it went from a, you know, it went from a, you know, an estimated seven-ish to an estimated nine-ish, right? And so, I mean, that's a, that's a steep escalation.
Yeah, and that was part of, well, a lot of the miscommunication that was going on as far as costs were concerned.
But I, the board is aware that they're not on the hook for 26.
Okay, I just want to, there's just so much going on around that, I, I want to just make it clear.
Thank you.
There, there members of the public weren't clear on that, so that's really important to make, make clear in the newspaper.
Is there a way to put that language of where that number is now? Because we have a couple of whereas clauses that discuss the different bond amounts, so it does give the impression that the district is on for 50% of 26 million.
What does it say?
Well, the different bonding.
Doesn't say it, it just says bond issues. There's no specific numbers in the whereas's.
I think it's a matter of distinguishing between the project as a whole and the Deets Stadium project, right? So the project as a whole is $26 million, including a Andretta Pool, where the, where the project, Deets Stadium alone, is that, that just over $19 million.
All right, like, so phase two.
And, but in the, in the original IMA, the statement says 50% of all capital projects done at Deets Stadium, so it's, it's, it's easily to be understood, misunderstood, what the district's responsibility is around the total cost of the project.
And so would you all prefer that it be distinguished in the resolution, that what the school district's responsibility is as far as the costs are concerned?
Well, would you have to be careful with that, because we can't change the agreement. So, I mean, it would just be.
But we can add to the, or amend the resolution, or we can put language in.
Just to add the number, so folks for education reasonings?
Just public information reasons. Well, I think also in the accounting and in the presentation, like, I think that Jack, there's a great job presenting to the board, going through the entire project and letting everyone know, but I think it's still combined when those things are presented. So maybe if we have a, two different accountings, I know that's extra work, but two different accountings, the accounting of the Deets Stadium project as a whole, and the accounting, I mean, as, well, as the Deets Stadium project as a whole, and the accounting of just the Deets Stadium project, which is part of the collaboration between the city and Kingston School District.
Yeah, I think that's something the mayor's office would have to produce, I don't think this can bear the weight of that kind of detail.
And I think, I think, I don't, and I think that's, I think you're right.
So my, I had one issue, or one thing to discuss with section two, and then there were a couple of whereas's that I would be curious about. So you mentioned another, Paul Palladino, you mentioned another place where it might be good for the school board to have a representative that would be in with when Jack is doing a meeting with his people, right?
Correct.
So is that something that we can put into this whereas, or is that something that would have to go through the mayor's office as part of his power?
That would have to go through the mayor's office.
Okay.
I mean, we could, you know, request that he, he does that, but that's, since that's in the agreement, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we can't make changes on the agreement. We could request it.
Yeah, I'm thinking at least request it so that we re, we emphasize that we think that what you're talking about is reasonable and, and appropriate.
Yeah, we could definitely always ask, and I don't know if you want to make that more of a formal ask, or just an ask.
I don't know what other folks think.
But we have our lawyer who would like to speak. I mean, is that what you're, you're thinking too, is to have it, the meetings come back to finance, or the meetings come back to finance with the school board?
Uh, no, no, no.
Yeah, can you clarify what you're requesting?
The, the request is, is that in essence, we reemphasize what the agreement calls for, that there be a representative, when Jack is in the room with the other folks who are making some of these decisions at an early stage, that it's, we want to make sure that somebody from the school board is there, as well as if we get asked to increase the cost, that there would be representative here as well.
A school board representative in the meetings with Jack, that's what you're requesting.
Yeah, or somebody from Paul Palladino's office.
And that doesn't happen already?
No, as far as the project, the project meetings, that does happen.
Don't we have, in the agreement, we had language in there that a member or representative from the school board would meet monthly, or whatever that term was? I thought that was in there.
The, the school district and, school district administration and, and the mayor would meet monthly, and then we have the school board member on the Recreation Committee. My, my just contention is that the Recreation Committee isn't really where this work is done, it's really done in the project, you know, project, in the Project Advisory Committee.
So has, are you satisfied with your representation in that Project Advisory Committee?
I, I think the board would like to have someone on there.
So someone from the board and from?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not sure, because that is actually changing the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So us putting in.
So that would be something that we would have to emphasize, or we would invite the mayor to invite.
That would be a request.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, I mean, while we're doing that, I mean, maybe we want to have a representation from the common council as well at these, but that, putting that, because that's why I was confused, because I thought you were asking about the school board, and for us to have the school board going into the meeting that the mayor is having, that is in the contract, that's different than what you're asking, we, we don't have the authority to make that change in the agreement. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Carl, Carl.
I have, section one says that we encourage the school district to designate a representative to serve as liaison to the Kingston Recreation Commission, but I'm hearing you say you don't really want that, or you don't care about that.
I don't.
So, and you, it's a matter, it will not benefit the relationship if that were to happen, it would just, so I'm not quite sure what we have section one.
It, it's in the, well, yeah, it's in the agreement, the, so we can't change that again, they will have that, it's up to them if they want, because I, I agree with Dr. Palladino, I don't think it has the weight that I would want, and that I'm hearing that the school board would want to have, to be there, but it is in the agreement, so that's why it was emphasizing here. I mean, we could, we could take it out if nobody, if the school board says, no, we just don't want to go, and that's up to them, that's part of the agreement already.
So it seems that it's here to serve as moral suage and hurt that, but I don't think it's fully necessary if you want to do it, you do it, you want to do it. I don't see a reason for section one, we can leave it, but I don't think it serves any particularly useful purpose. My second question is for you, you said this is moving in the right direction, and that is to me a bit of an answer, do you approve of this, or do you not, or would you like to see it be different, and if so, how?
I have to just remind everyone that I can speak on behalf of the board, but I can't decide in terms of what the board's wishes are. And when I say that I, I think that it helps bring us to a place where we can partner and, and improve communication, and, and I'm hoping if that happens, then the board will have the level of awareness that they are, are looking for. they are, are looking for.
What I'm hearing you say now is that this is sufficient to meet what you were hoping to get out of this gathering?
Yes. And just to add, we, in our reorg this summer, we have identified a board member to be the liaison to the Deed Stadium project.
Have you asked if they could participate, that liaison, in the administrative side meetings, not the rec commission meetings, or is that liaison for the rec commission?
No, not the rec commission.
Or just in general?
For the, for the Deed Stadium project. Dr. Pedalino attends those meetings, but the board felt that it might be important to have a board member there as well.
So they do go, or you, that will happen?
They will, moving forward, they will.
At this, at this point, the agreement does not allow for, for a school board member to be on the, of the project advisory committee, the recreational committee. And that may have just have been a matter of, at the time of our signing, that's what they called it. You know, that, that's where they thought the work was going to be done, and then created a separate committee. You know, and I know, you can't, you don't want to go back in and change the, the resolution, or you can't go back in and change the original agreement. There are a couple of, I guess, assurances, which I don't think the mayor would be against, or, or the city administration would be against, of having a representative from the school board. I think the one, and Miss Anderson, and again, I speak for the district, not the board, but just in looking at Section Two, saying that it's moving in the right, right direction, I believe, is the, is the feeling of the, of the board. But it's still advisory in nature.
So, so what exactly are you looking for?
Well, I guess...
Are you looking to actually make decisions along with the administrative?
Well, I guess, more detail, but what is, what is the role of that advisor, you know, that having someone, the board present in an advisory role, what is their position when meeting with this group? What is the, what is the method in which they are given voice? What's the, you know, what is that going to look like?
Are you essentially asking what power will they have?
Essentially, yes.
So, so Bob has had his hand up a little bit, so let me get him.
Okay, I'm a little confused. I'm confused by a couple of things. There has been school district participation in the project management team. Is that a correct statement? Okay. So some of this stuff shouldn't have been a surprise, I would expect, because the people there have been kept up to speed. That's one thing. Second thing is, some of the scope change that's caused the increase in prices come from the school district. Is that correct?
I see.
Okay. The, I, I tend to like what Andrea's created here, in that any additional cost has to go through this council, and having your representation prior to that, or at that meeting, accomplishes what you're looking for, in my view. And I guess, I don't see why changing, I think changing the agreement is a dangerous thing to do for the school district. You know, the, the agreement is a sweet agreement for the school district. It really, you know, you get a lot of good stuff out of that, and very little bad stuff. I would suggest that this resolution that's been suggested accomplishes what you need.
Yeah, I think it just, was there anybody else before I could jump in, Rita? I, yeah, it was, and the section two has morphed, and that's why I wanted to talk about it. Because when I originally brought up this suggestion in just casual conversation with one school board, there, there was more weight on the, instead of just the school board president, it was actual the school board. So that is something that I thought that we could consider, so I appreciate you mentioning that, if that's what they want. And then it doesn't also say, will they, will we take a vote together? Will we, you know, just have Ms. Anderson, or whoever is the school board president at the time, you know, talk on behalf? So that's, that's the part that I wanted to, to kind of weigh what your thoughts were, and how much authority, and what that looks like. I know all of you as people, and I know that, you know, you're going to do the best thing for not only our community, but for our school districts. I, I know that about every single one of you, but I think this gives the school board more trust, and definitely the public more trust when we have it down on paper. Because I would have been okay saying, I know the common council is going to do the right thing, and, and make sure that you have voice at the table, but that's just not enough to say it. We can't do a gentle lady handshake. We want to have it in writing. So that's where I want the conversation to center on, because that's where I thought we might have some adjustments. Or maybe just go through and say if everybody is okay with Section Two as is, but I think the, the other step would be to say, do we want the school board president? Do we want the school board what we want, and what that, what that would look like?
Well, there would be one clarification in Section Two, and that is going back to what we were talking about before, because it says, "Ask to approve additional funds for the Deed Stadium Andretta Pool Capital Improvement Project." That's the official name, but we might want to add a clause in there, "Additional funds for the Deed Stadium portion of the Deed Stadium Andretta Pool Capital Improvement Project." That clarifies there's two different.
I'm perfectly fine with that change. The Deed Stadium portion of the Deed Stadium Andretta Pool Capital Improvement Project. I, I had my bag there, and then I offered up my seat. So if anybody could, Rita, do you mind making that change in the hard copy? I also gave up my hard copy.
Well, I think according to the master plan, it was referred to as Phase Two, right? Because Phase One, A, B, and C were the pool and the splash pad, and Phase Two was the stadium.
That's a good point. I think we need to know exactly what this, what we're talking about.
Well, just say Phase Two, Deed Stadium portion, so that it's clear, because people don't know what Phase Two means. Just say Phase Two, Deed Stadium portion.
You see, I don't know if you're looking at the right spot.
No, section...
Section Two. Put it in, so it'd be that if the Kingston Common Council has asked to approve additional funds for the Deed Stadium, or Phase Two of the Deed Stadium program for the Deed Stadium Andretta Pool Capital Improvement Project. Is everybody satisfied with that?
Deed Stadium, Deed Stadium portion.
The Phase Two for the Deed Stadium project. Assert that between additional funds and for the Deed Stadium Andretta Pool capital. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Stadium portion.
The Deed Stadium portion. That kind of answers the other issue that was brought up too, with the confusion, right?
May for me to answer something that was said over here, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name. The, the design meetings are one thing. The costs and the bidding are another. So to say that we were given all the information and get all the information right away about things like that is not true. Were we involved in all the design meetings? Yes. Were some of the costs, the scope creep, as we like to call it, because of the school district? Yes. Were we informed prior to, maybe a couple days prior to you being informed, of the increase in the cost beyond the original, the original estimate?
What else?
Yes, to your point about having, having input, you know, into this, oh, I'm looking at this phrase, and what it says is that the school board president or their designees will be invited to meet with the members, but it doesn't say what you're meeting for, with something like to provide input, or something, so that it acknowledges that what we want to do is, you know, is hear your views on whatever increases are being made?
That, that's exactly my point in talking about, in trying to get your opinions. This was designed before we met, so this is, this is what this committee meeting is about, is to figure that language out, and how much you want that. It does say it's for, to improve, approve additional funds.
For the council to approve.
So we know it's that, right? That's when we would invite them. But do we want to invite, like it says, the school board president, or something else, and what that looks like? So I would love to hear everybody's opinion, so we could build on this.
So I would, I would just say, yes, just add, to meet, to provide input, you know, like, what's the point of the meeting? It's, we want to hear what they have to say. And I think, yes, having the president of the school board there, and maybe the superintendent as well, I don't know. I'm new to this, so I'm sort of asking questions at the same time as I'm suggesting something.
We're really in the draft in weeds here, aren't we?
We're voting on it in about 10 minutes.
It's all good. It's not a complaint. It's, it's an observation. I think it's fine the way it is, is really what I want to say. To meet with includes multiple subsets, to provide input, to whine and complain, to lament, to rage, to ask questions, to be quiet, right? It can be any and all of the above. So I think that language is fine, and I also think that the scope of invitations, mayor and the school board president, or their designees, really covers the waterfront on who might be a suitable representative. So I think whoever drafted this, I'm looking at you, Andrea, did a great job.
Yeah, I like the resolution.
And corporate counsel.
Yeah, and I also think that the, it, it should be the board's decision who they choose to send to these med, these meetings.
Does that mean you're good with the way it says, "School board president or their designees?"
Yeah. I think, you know, and with our committee meetings, you know, it is up to the chair to allow any speaking before the meetings anyway. In the way that we have, history says that we are open to letting the public share their comments with us, and if we're inviting you to a meeting, we're expecting for you to make comments. Agree? Everybody agree with that? Okay. So I'm fine with the way that it is. I do like, I do want to add the, the language. Are we all good on adding the language about Phase Two for the Deed Stadium portion of the Deed Stadium Andretta Pool Capital Improvement Project? Yes?
I just want to confirm that the scope of work will not change then past this point. That a cost can go up, right? But...
The actual, what the actual design is, are you saying?
Correct.
Yeah, well, yeah, how would we know that?
You might not want to say that. Scope can go up or down. You know, there could be things that you don't anticipate in the future.
Or maybe I misspoke, like a master plan, or adding a feature that hasn't even been spoken about yet, right? Just hypothetically, and...
That's not our issue now, is it? Is this something we want to be addressing now, are you suggesting?
Well, I just want to make sure that that isn't an issue that they're concerned about, because when they speak about costs going up and being able to have a say or have input, so.
I, I don't know how to respond to that.
Okay.
I don't know how to answer that.
I can hazard a quick answer, which is, that's why this exists. If, if costs are, if there, if someone, a decision maker wants costs to go up, this is a mechanism for managing and controlling that, and getting input from all sides. So this is designed to address that possibility.
I also don't know, and Dr. Pedalino's definitely been privy to more conversations, but if the, the way the bid language went out, it may also talk about the scope, because doesn't it often, I'm looking at Bob, because you know how this works too, it usually has a percentage of how it could be lowered or raised, and I don't know if you want to speak on that, if you know, but that might be already there.
I wouldn't, if it's okay. I would just hazard a guess that most general conditions include in it an ability to increase or decrease the scope of work without having to renegotiate. Generally, it's 25 percent. I don't know what the specific contract says, but there's generally an, an opening there to change your scope if your costs get, get out of hand. Up or down?
Currently, in the, in the presentation that, that Jack has put together, and what you voted on, there's about $1 million in that, in that kind of flexibility and contingency. You know, so there's, there is, and, you know, I've done about half a billion dollars worth of school construction in my 17 years as superintendent, and yes, things go up and down without the scope changing. I don't think that's really what we're talking about, pricing going up because of a, because of a, you know, a change in, a change order that happens, or a change in conditions that's found, but really more along, if the, if we're changing the scope. And that's multiple layers, right? That's the design committee, then that's, then that's, then that's the financial people, and then that's you, and the school board.
So, let me just go back. So the three questions that you asked, Ms. Anderson, with regard to relate, delays, costs, and better communication, have those questions been answered, or?
Yes, I think the questions have been answered, and I think the Section Two allows for us to continue to ask and, and get answers.
Very good, very good. Okay, with that, I have a light resolution before me. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting procedures for review of future funding, requests arising out of Deed Stadium renovations. I will call for a vote with the...
Need a motion? And also, just, just a reminder, this is for laws and rules members only. So if you're not serving on that committee, then no vote just yet.
Right, so this, this resolution, I'll call for a motion for it with the added language that we put in Section Two.
And maybe that we adopt as amended?
Oh, favor? Second. Okay. On favor? Laws and rules? Yes. I, I think it moved, I think it passed. Thank you very much. You made that motion, yes?
All right, just while Rita's finishing that up, we're going to move over to the common council. So if you, we'll take a five-minute pause. Yep, go to your seats, and we'll, we'll all pass this. I know. I, I sure, I did the roll, yes. You could, yes, you could go with the back. Yeah, so in five minutes, we'll reconvene as a council meeting. Thank you, everybody, for doing your due diligence on this. Thank you, everybody, for doing your due diligence on this. We're going to get started in a couple of minutes. If you could find your seats, I'd appreciate it. But while you're doing that, just a quick public service announcement. For an emergency, take the stairs, down, down the stairs. For bathrooms, we're out this door, men's room to my left, women's room to the right. I don't know, I don't use that bathroom. Maybe it's, the men's room is on the second floor then. We'll play it safe. All right, thank you for pointing that out. I'm now calling this meeting, special common council meeting, to order at 8:21 PM on August 30th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. May I please have roll call?
Alderman Pastie?
Here.
Alderman Frankel?
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Present.
Alderman Worthington? Alderman Muhammad? Alderman Dennison?
Here.
Alderman Shabbat?
Here.
Alderman Hirsch?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you. We're now entering into public speaking. If, do we have the sheet already? All right, we have allotted 30 minutes. If you haven't signed up, please do so already. Or if you haven't signed up already, please do so. We have allotted 30 minutes for this purpose. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. If the 30 minutes runs out, I will take a motion from the council to extend for another 30 minutes. Anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak, just raise your Zoom hand and our clerk will get to you. First speaker, please.
Jean Jacobs.
Good evening. My name is Jean Jacobs, lifelong resident, city of Kingston, born and raised here. Raised my entire family through the Kingston City School District, four children. I spoke two weeks ago at the Board of Education meeting. I frequent the meetings. And my platform that evening was loyalty, honesty, trust, and trust. And a united front leads the way. What I have seen over the last several months disturbs me considerably, and it's my community that I value and pride dearly. I have seen lies, deceit, and deception, and attack. I even have my children calling me, who do not live currently in the area, except my one daughter, wanting to know what's going on, what, what, what's wrong? Why is the mayor attacking the school district? It's very disturbing, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm telling you that. And I served on the board for quite some time, and I was very perplexed that the Deed Stadium Commission was absolved. To me, I served on it for three years when I was on the board. And to me, it was a governing body that made headway, and we made rules, regulations, we followed them, and I recognize the IMA dissolved that for the period of time over the last five years. So now we, the taxpayers in the city of Kingston, we start out in 2019 with an agreement of 2.5 million, and we're up now at 26 million. I mean, quite frankly, the people are leaving New York State due to taxation, okay? And yet, the most vulnerable, our children, have been affected seriously by this issue with the stadium. Just think about the time that they have lost over the course of the last three to four years. It's detrimental to, and, and our children right now, it's a very troubling time for them. It's a time of indecision, and they are trying to find themselves with the uncertainty as of the COVID. And Dr. Palladino is re-envisioning education. It's not an easy task, ladies and gentlemen, and neither is it easy being a board member. So I urge you all here tonight, in closing, to work together in unity. Go forward together so that we don't have to think that one is against the other. It is disturbing, and it has to cease because our children are a product of what we are discussing here this evening, okay? We have to recognize the importance of that. So I thank you for the opportunity. I have served my community over 50 years, and I will continue to do so and take pride because we have to be here for all the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Julie Donovan.
Hi, everybody. My name is Julie Donovan, and I live with my husband at 120 First Street in Kingston. My husband Jim and I have lived in Kingston our entire lives. We have never, in our entire lives, ever felt taken advantage of by the city of Kingston or the Kingston School District until now. We pay thousands of dollars in taxes to both entities, and we are not getting what we pay for in many ways. But tonight, I am here to discuss the renovation of Deed Stadium, which is a debacle. I do not have an answer, but it seems none of you do either. While you all try to figure out which side will win, the taxpayers and the children are losing. You all must put politics aside and come together to solve this very important, very delayed, very expensive problem. You have made Kingston the laughing stock of the county, and you are wasting taxpayer dollars by the millions. We do our part by paying our taxes. You all need to put our money where your mouths are and fix this once and for all. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Scott Denny.
Good evening, Madam President, good evening, common council. My name is Scott Denny. I live on Hasbrook Avenue in Kingston. I'm coming before the council this evening as a deeply concerned resident to speak about the Deed Stadium project and the false narrative that has been presented by Mayor Noble. Following the mayor's most recent and deceitful actions and statements, it is evident now more than ever that the mayor has deliberately misled not only the Kingston City School District, but every resident, taxpayer, and student who own the school district, or he truly has no idea what he is doing. Either way, neither one of those are acceptable. As reported by the Daily Freeman, when Mayor Noble was faced with the question of ownership, he claimed that he thought, he thought that the city needed to own 100% ownership if they were to use DRI funds were being used, which was a completely false claim and narrative, where under that claim, the city would have to own the future Kingstonian if it ever comes to pass. As, we also, we also know, once Mayor Noble realized that the truth had surfaced, he actually doubled down. And he went to the Freeman, and he began to attack not, not only Dr. Palladino, but the entire Kingston City School Board and anyone else within the district he felt necessarily, necessary, including athletic directors. I am hopeful that the council does not intend to permit the mayor to move forward alone, and will have a transparent committee oversee the project every step of the way, working alongside the council members and the Kingston City School Board. I expect that the mayor will be required to clearly present the implications to both the school and general taxes that are most certainly going to increase, which should certainly be done almost immediately. We have now reached a critical point where it is imperative that the common council must begin the process of charter reform to ensure that this type of an incident can never, ever, ever occur again. As council members, I remind everyone that the council is elected by this, you are elected to council by your constituents, and their wants and needs must be met first. After just shy of eight years of the Noble administration, we simply cannot afford another. I thank you for your time and all of your efforts, and I hope that you can find your way through to make this work out right for everybody in the city of Kingston. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Anybody else wish to speak that hasn't? Anybody on Zoom? All right, then I will close the public speaking portion of the meeting. We are going to go into the report of committees now, starting with resolution number 145.
Resolution 145 of 2023. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting procedures for review of future funding requests arising out of Deed Stadium renovations.
On the question, Alderman Rennie Scott Childress?
Thank you, Madam President. I would appreciate the work that you put into looking for a way to work through the issues we're facing. Our greatest interest here is working for the benefit of all the citizens of Kingston. We all know that Deed Stadium was in dire need of renovation. We've seen the changes in the economy, though, since this was first announced. We're happy that we've got money from the DRI. And of course, we are happy to be working with the school board to find the other funds to make this needed renovation happen. Not only are we seeing needed renovation, but we're seeing really wonderful new design elements. I think that this is going to be a place that's going to be really well-used, not just by the school system, their athletes on the field, but the citizens of Kingston, Ulster County at large, with all the new amenities that will be put there. And we appreciate the diligent work of project manager Schoonmaker in what he's done so far. And with this resolution, resolution that you put together and that we discussed tonight, I think what we see is that we are prizing unity here. We're really looking for ways to cooperate with the school board, make sure that all the necessary voices are at the table so that any future changes, any future possible changes are discussed and vetted beforehand and not made a surprise. So I will be very much in favor of this resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Alderman Steve Shabbat, then Alderman Michelle Hirsch?
Thank you, Madam President. I think one thing we can all agree on, it seemed like everybody was in agreement. This is a project that's, that's vital to the city, vital to the school district. It's going to impact a lot of citizens, the students at the high school. It's really going to affect everyone in the city in a very positive way, I feel. I feel the agreement is, is, is very fair. I think, you know, it's really going to enable us to move forward with the school district. I like that we've kind of avoided putting too fine a point on a lot of these, a lot of the points in the amendment allows for a little more give and take. So certainly, I'm going to be voting for this. You know, I certainly would like to see this project continue. Thank you.
Alderman Michelle Hirsch?
Thank you, Madam President. I just would like to say that I'm very happy that we have arrived at consensus between the common council and school board and each of our administrations. We are in silos for the school district and the council and, but we, we all have very important commodity, and that's our children. And I look forward to more collaboration with the district and on this project, and hopefully other things in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no more discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted eight to zero. And that concludes our communications. Before I take a motion to adjourn, I'd just like to thank the school board members who are in attendance, administration, Dr. Palladino, and Mrs. Anderson for participating. And I look forward to future collaborations. And I will now take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Rennie Scott Childress, second by Rita Worthington. All in favor?
Aye.
We are hereby adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is September 12th. A little bit different, remember, September 12th, 7:30. See you all then. Thank you.